Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. If able, please stand with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caudell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder. Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is public items, and members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes, in accordance with our governing body rules of procedure. The city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous. I had a sign-up sheet here, which I had a name, but that was crossed off, so I'm assuming you changed your mind. But that does not preclude anybody from coming forward for public comments. If you'd like to come forward, please come forward, sir, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, this is Billy Crohn, 6633 Wed Street. Firstly, my neighbors in Quail Creek and Milburn West have been asking about the 7/11 property that burned down earlier this year. It sounds like the owner is not very motivated to rebuild quickly. Our neighbors are done looking at half-missing gas stations surrounded by a blackened fence. I have been hoping to hear movement on this in the planning commission meetings that I also sit there and listen to, but nothing has thus far come up. Neighbors who have spoken with me either wanted another small convenience store, or a blank green space of some sort, perhaps a passive park, without parking that would bring more traffic to the area. Marion traffic, of course, has been ruinous in both Antioch and Shawnee Mission since you gave over sixty million of our tax dollars away to Marion Grand Station and Grand Station Marketplace. The upcoming Trader Joe's and more cars residing in Marion and the north apartments as well won't make it any better. My neighbors in Quail Creek and west Milburn deserve better. Secondly, our codes department enforces ten inches of grass height on residents with fines and court dates. So I'm going to knock out a property owner that's badly in violation tonight. Sixty-three hundred Carter Avenue has gone to that mowing for weeks, and the weeds are now over five feet high. And I took an example, too. I just didn't bring it tonight. And the owner of sixty-three hundred Carter is you. It is Chatlin Park. So I reported this last week. It's still in modus this morning. It's not very fair to my neighbors that our current administration isn't taking care of the city's own lawns, but they expect, they issue fines and fees to residents for much less. My neighbors in Ward Four and all those who use our parks and trail system deserve better, Bob. Thirdly, Water One has another leak that is eroding our streets on Antioch now, at the intersection of Sixty-seventh Street, and it has been eating away for several weeks. I'll share a video with Celia, but responsible city administration must include proactive maintenance and franchise agreements to prevent further, another geyser like we had on Sixty-seventh. My neighbors and our city's guests deserve better. Lastly, I want to thank you for letting me speak so far. I want to assure you, when I become mayor, I will never silence you, Bob. Last meeting, you threatened to take away my free speech during public comment in flagrant disregard for the Constitution and state law that you swore an oath to. Our city deserves better, and I will do better soon. In fact, I hope genuinely that you remain involved in our city and come to city council meetings as much as I have for the last ten years. I would be, I would love to have you on committees and listen to you speak in these very chambers in the future. That's all I have for a public comment. Thank you.
Mr. Crohn, does anyone else like to come forward at this time? Okay, I see no one else. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am. Please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Well, my name is Sandy Baldwin. Sandra on the record for ninety-five oh three west forty-seventh street, yeah, forty-seventh terrace here in Marion. And this is my first council meeting. I've lived here in Marion since two thousand and one. I probably should have things, but one of the things, and I don't know how this works, so I don't know if this is public comment, where I got a notice saying the Johnson County property tax increase in public hearings. I don't know where that falls on the agenda. Is that during the public thing, or is that during your agenda? Is someone going to speak to that?
We're gonna speak about the budget a little bit later. I don't know if you're referring to the county, which just had their meeting concerning the budget. So, yeah, I think you missed that meeting, but we are gonna be talking about the Marion's portion of the budget this evening.
Okay, because the notice I got was seven PM. So Johnson County property tax increase.
That's probably. Was that notice ours, sir, or did it come out? We don't.
Okay.
If you'd like to speak about the Marion budget this evening, please raise your hand when we're talking about that, and we'll let you come forward and talk about budget problems at that time.
Okay, so I.
Yeah, just have a seat right now, but we'll call you back up, and thanks, thanks for coming. All right, anyone else this evening want to come forward and talk about public items? Okay, all right. We'll close out that portion of the public items. The next item up is the consent agenda. All items listed under the heading are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. There'd be no sever discussion of these items unless the council member requests, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda. Considering we only have one item this evening, and it is the consent agenda, does anybody have any discussion they'd like to have about that before we call for a vote? Okay, I see nobody requesting that. I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Hands.
I move that the council approve consent agenda, item number one.
Okay, we have a motion. I have a second. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up this evening is the mayor's report, and I have a proclamation, which you guys know how I love proclamations, and I'm gonna read that to you at this time. Whereas emergencies and disasters, whether natural, technological, or human caused, pose ongoing threats to the safety, security, and well-being of our communities. And whereas emergency management professionals serve a critical role in preparing for responding to, recovering from, and mitigating the impacts of disasters, working tirelessly to coordinate plans, resources, and communication before, during, and after incidents. And whereas the field of emergency management encompasses partnerships across government agencies, first responders, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and the public to build resilience and to ensure a coordinated response to crisis. And whereas the importance of personal and community preparedness is increasingly evident, and every resident, business, and institution play a role in helping their communities remain safe, informed, and ready. And whereas National Emergency Management Awareness Month serves as a time to recognize and appreciate the dedication and professionalism of emergency management personnel, and to educate the public on how to stay prepared for all types of hazards. And whereas this month provides an opportunity to highlight preparedness activities, encourage planning efforts, and strengthen emergency response systems at entry level. And now therefore, I, Bob Pape, on behalf of the City of Marion Council, do hereby proclaim August twenty twenty-five as do hereby, as National Emergency Management Awareness Month in Johnson County, and encourage all residents to take proactive steps to prepare for emergencies by developing personal and family emergency plans, assembling emergency supply kits, staying informed about local risk, and supporting the work of emergency management in building a more resilient community. Proclaim this twenty-fifth day of August twenty twenty-five, Bob Pape, Mayor. We have some emergency managers, management people in here. Let's give a round of applause to anybody that's brought in. I'd like to take this time to present this to our police and fire chiefs. So which one of you wants to take this? I only have one.
It's him.
Firemen just take everything anyway.
Okay, so that's the only proclamation I have. I do have a few things. I always like to spend a moment just talking about things that I and the council have done, and I apologize for not getting back to the council and seeing, we'll cover that, some stuff I might have missed. I know I missed the lunch and learn, but I think some of the council people were there. Is that correct? No? Okay, maybe not. I missed it, so I wasn't sure who was and wasn't there. I, and a council member, attended the Marion selfie shot with our city employees in front of a city hall. Always a pleasure to be part of Team Marion. A couple of council members attended Marion Music Festival at the community center. I attended the legislative forum at the Sylvester Powell Community Center. I got to hear from our Kansas legislators about what's going on at the state level. I, and a council member, met with Mr. Engel tonight to prepare tonight's agenda. Is there anything else that I missed? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cozmeier.
Yeah, a number of us, three council members, have enrolled in the Marion Police Department Citizens Academy.
Okay, thank you.
And we've had our first session.
You had the first session.
It's been great.
Good. Thanks for sharing that. Anything else that I missed? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
We also had the public art meeting last week with our public artists that are working on the.
And they were in town, I understand.
Yeah, Joey and Felicity are here, and they're working on it, and check out their progress. And they're having a painting party on Saturday, where you can help paint some of the elements that will be incorporated into the.
Is it like bring your own brush, or?
No, it's just show up at the community center from ten to four.
Ten to four?
Yeah.
There you go. Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right. Well, that being said, okay, well, that concludes the mayor's report. Next thing up would be, this evening, would be, well, it looks like a public hearing to receive comments regarding the city exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Looks like we have Director Borth coming to the podium.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we get to finalize some things for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget. And the first thing up legally that we have to do is the mill rate. So in front of us. And a lot of this is gonna be a reiteration of things that we've discussed at past meetings, but I'm still gonna go through it for public sake, and then just a refresher for everyone else in the room. So a reminder that the revenue neutral rate is going to be the same amount of property tax revenue of the year we are currently in, so we are gonna be talking about what we estimate for twenty twenty-five. So for Marion, the amount that we believe we're going to bring in, according to the county, is that seven point seven million dollar number. Then that would equate to twenty-five point eight five five mills. So if council would like to generate the same amount of property tax revenue as the year we're currently in, for twenty twenty-six, that would mean that the mill rate would need to be twenty-five point eight five five. However, the rate that staff has identified for us to be able to provide the same level of service to the community and the same programs is going to be twenty-six point four one two. You will notice that that decreased a little bit, point zero zero three from the last time we talked. That was after certification with the state budget worksheets of all of our numbers. So that is the official number, if you were to move forward, that I would submit to the state with all of their worksheets that they require. A reminder that if you would like to adopt the revenue neutral rate, that philosophy states that we will, the government will provide next year services at last year's prices. So as staff, or, sorry, as council has requested of staff, we are looking at how we can lower the mill levy each year. And like I stated, the way that, or the most reductions that we feel comfortable doing for the twenty twenty-six budget, bringing to you, is twenty-six point four one two. This is a little over a quarter cent decrease from the twenty twenty-five rate. These are the numbers that were provided to the city by Johnson County. These came about two months ago. So again, it's just showing you what the revenue neutral rate they identified as. That's not a calculation we do. That's what the county gives us. And then it is showing how that differs from what staff is proposing. The difference in revenue is about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. As we've discussed previously, Marion is very middle of the pack when it comes to our total mill rate. As you can see here, I have the twenty twenty-five rate that is slightly higher than the proposed twenty twenty-six rate. All other cities that are up here, that is gonna be their twenty twenty-five rate, as most have not yet adopted their rate. We are also earlier than most cities. And then, as I stated, the last time we talked about the mill rate, we are actually one of the few cities in Johnson County in this area that are planning to reduce our mill rate. So up there, you can see the two cities that are anticipating that they will have to increase their rate from their twenty twenty-five levy. And then there's a large group that are planning to keep theirs flat, which means no increase. So that would be if we were to keep a twenty-six point six six five rate. And then there are a few that are doing slightly under a quarter, slightly under us. And then we are in the group that are doing a quarter to about fifty cents reduction. And there is no one that is anticipating doing over fifty cents of a reduction. So that is all that I have for you on the revenue neutral rate. Again, there is nothing, even though we are having the public hearing tonight, for you to be able to increase it. There is nothing saying that we have to. This is simply just giving council and the public time to discuss what your best interest and your prerogative is, and staff is fully prepared to adjust as you see fit tonight. We do have to adopt the revenue neutral rate by resolution if you want to exceed it. If you choose to go with the revenue neutral rate or less than that, we do not need any motion tonight. And then we will just adjust the budget at the next public hearing at the item after this. That is all I have, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Director Borth? Go ahead, Ms. Leahy.
I just want to clarify, you talked about the revenue neutral rate being, it would be collecting the same number of dollars as revenue.
Yes, sir.
As this year and twenty twenty-five, as next year would be quote-unquote revenue neutral.
Yes, sir.
And like you said, we'd have to spend, we'd have to reduce services to account for inflation, because we all know everything has gotten more expensive this year.
Yes.
And we couldn't provide, we're even under what we anticipate inflation to be for twenty twenty-five, if my math runs correct.
Your math is correct. Yes, sir. Yes, we, with the revenue neutral rate, there is no adjustment for inflation or anything. It is simply the exact same amount of dollars that were brought in in the year prior.
Because I know I could read into the future that we're gonna get a question about it. The reason why people's dollar amount in their property tax is most likely going up is not because rates are going up across the city. It's because their property is more valuable than it was last year.
Correct, yes, so.
I mean, I know it's a blanket statement, may not hold true for every case out of a hundred, but.
Yes, that is the most accurate assumption to make. So for the average home in Marion, it did increase the assessed valuation by about ten thousand. Last year, we were at three hundred thousand is the average home value. This year, we're at three hundred and ten thousand, so that can tell you about what the average increase was for this year. The difference in those two, in the revenue neutral rate, and then the proposed rate by staff is about nineteen dollars to that three hundred and ten thousand dollar home. So that nineteen dollar difference would be over the course of the year, not monthly. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Cozmeier.
So that nineteen dollars per home, that means the average home, if we do the proposed rate compared to the.
Revenue neutral.
Revenue neutral rate will pay an extra almost ten dollars per, by, per like property tax check that we write in May and December?
Yes.
Okay.
Most people pay, write two checks, so there's one towards the beginning of the year, and then one about halfway through. Yes, sir.
Sorry, no, that.
Yes.
Number helps put that all in context.
You were accurate. Yes, sir. Yes, the average home pays about nine hundred and twenty dollars a year, and it would increase to about nine hundred and forty.
Okay.
Any other questions, Director Borth? Okay, I see no other questions. Will we open up the public meeting? We will be discussing the budget at the next public meeting, correct, as far as actual budget numbers? Public hearings, excuse me, at the next public hearing. But this one will be strictly for a public hearing for the mill rate, the revenue neutral rate.
Yes, sir.
So in reference to, thank you, Director Borth. I think you would want to speak at the next one, but unless you want to speak at this one for the revenue neutral rate. And if that goes for anyone out there in the public, or in the audience that wants to speak about the revenue neutral rate, or has concerns about that. Is there anyone out there for that?
Yes, just clarification. This public hearing is gonna be if anyone has comments about their personal property tax. This would probably be the public hearing to do that in, because once you set this, we can't go back.
Oh, okay, so.
Yes.
Excuse me, ma'am. Would you like, would you please come forward at this time if you have concerns about your property tax? Thanks for that clarification.
Again, my name is Sandra Baldwin. Sandy, I go by. Nine five zero three west forty-seventh terrace, Marion, Kansas, and six six two oh three. When we bought, when I, we bought the house, my late husband was alive, and our property tax. Since that time, and I've been a widow for fifteen years, we were involved in a car accident in Indiana. I was a minister of the gospel, and we were involved in a car accident, which they ruled him at fault. He was a safe, safe driver, pulled out from a flashing yellow, those cross-traffic lights, you know, where the little signs were way back, and had not been in that territory, but one time in his life. But now I'm a widow for fifteen years, and I've seen my property tax double in these years. I have not been able to repair my house. I have siding and other issues. I've gone twice to, when I've got my property tax, I've gone twice to have it lessened. I get like a three thousand dollar lesson. And I don't know, when I saw that the Johnson County property tax increased, and it was like, how can my property tax increase double in amount in the time that I've lived in my house, and I've had, not been able to make repairs? And I don't know who does the adjustments. I've not had anybody come out to my property and do, you know, do an adjustment and look at the outside, and, you know, I try and keep it in doing the best I can, but. So I don't know where to go to appeal and have someone come, because I've taken pictures, the two times I've gone to have it adjusted, it's like no one pays attention. And I don't know if that's the city, that's Johnson County, and I, I just, when I saw that, I felt compelled by the Lord to come and speak and just find out what I can do. And maybe this isn't the right place, but someone can give me counsel.
Sure. Well, sorry about your husband, but the Johnson County appraiser is who does the appraisal of your property, and that's not city-related, to determine what the value of your property is. So that's who you would need to see about lowering the appraised value of your home. But we do also have some grants that you might qualify for, and I would direct you afterwards to seek out our community development department itself, and look about some of those, those personal property rebate grants that are maybe available to you. Okay.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I've worked at City Union Mission for, this is my thirty-third year, working with the poor and homeless, and so. Anyway. I don't, I'm, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Engel, isn't it true that our portion of the city taxes is roughly about twenty-five percent of your full property tax assessment?
Of the complete, of the total tax bill that you would pay to all of the taxing entities on your tax bill, yes, the city is approximately twenty-five percent of that. The rest, the largest portion would be the school district, and you've got the county and the community college. But yeah, twenty-five percent would be the city's portion approximately.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, a lot of people may not know that, but that's about what we bring in. Okay, thank you, sir. Does anyone else want to come forward on this item this evening? Okay, Mr. Crohn, come forward to the podium, name and address for the record.
Billy Crohn, six six three three Wed Street. My name is spelled C-R-O-A-N, as in November fourth. I object to exceeding the revenue neutral rate this year. You have given away over a hundred million dollars to the rich developers of this, to the rich developers in the city over the last four years. If we give such money away to the rich, the least we could do would be to give our residents a break on their property taxes. You know, the people that voted for you. That'd be kind of nice. Don't fall for Jacob's mill rate myth. The only reason that our taxes are going up is the decision of this governing body and the other, of the other governing bodies that contribute to the property tax bills we receive. My name is Billy Crohn. The neighbors, my neighbors have an option. This November, I will stand for lower property taxes, not higher. And if you ignore us tonight, we will not ignore you this November.
Okay. Anyone else out there in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, I see nobody that wants to come forward. Well, I guess I would close out the public hearing portion here, and then I would entertain a motion for that this evening. Ms. Hands?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we're opening up the, well, I guess we'll let you talk about, we're opening up the meeting, so. But we're gonna, well, you can tell us we're gonna talk about the budget, aren't we?
Yes, sir. So thank you for setting the mill rate. So in front of you, this is going to be, again, the same thing we heard last time, but this is what is driving the budget this year. So as a reminder, for total revenues, this is gonna be all funds. We are bringing in approximately forty million. Expenditures are approximately forty-five million. Our ending fund balance is still very healthy and meets all of our financial and council policies. We would also like to point out that that fund balance may seem high. That is spread across all funds. It is a requirement to meet at least thirty percent in the general fund, which is a large portion of that. The other is going to be a substantial amount in CIP, the Capital Improvement Project Fund, and that is going to be for planned improvements in the future that council and staff have identified. This is an overview of just the general fund. It is showing that mill levy decrease as council just approved, and then showing a slight increase for sales and use tax, again, about three percent, in between two and four, which is very healthy and on track. And that's gonna be from twenty twenty-four actuals, since we don't have a good number yet for twenty twenty-five. With expenditures, we did implement or plan to implement everything up there, including a full-time position for a technology specialist. And then everything else was pulled back as much as possible. We did trim the budget from anything unnecessary so that revenues and expenditures could balance this year, and we would not have to dip into fund balance at all. So very proud of that for the city, and we were able to do that while still decreasing the mill levy. We are going to end with a fund balance of nine million. Combined, that is about, with risk management, as per policy, that is about thirty-eight point three percent of revenues. So we do meet policy. What is driving the budget? Again, that technology specialist position. What is driving the budget? Again, that technology specialist position, expanded IT contracts as we try to implement new, everything new that's going on and keep our security up to date. And then we also have our 11.5 million capital improvement plan, which is part of the summary, the budget summary that was presented. And we also have our community events and grants that are ongoing. Some did increase just based on use in the prior years. So there are some, like the rebates that Mayor mentioned. So we are keeping those in the budget and increasing as needed. Here are a list of all of those grants. We definitely encourage citizens to apply for those. They're just programs that have been identified as, by council in the past. Here is also our equipment reserve fund. Obviously, this is a substantial amount of money, but all of these items were planned. There is almost nothing new. It's ongoing replacements for different vehicles or large equipment. Now, I will say that the budget that I presented last time has a very similar number. We have about $2,000, I believe, dollars off from the property tax, but everything else is the same. So there were no change, no major changes to what I presented to you in the summary last time. But I'm happy to go over anything again or answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Director Borris this time? Questions this way? No questions that way? Okay.
Thank you.
You're a good job. Okay, so I will open up the public hearing portion of this. Would anybody like to speak this evening in reference to our budget that's been proposed this evening? Mr. Crowe, please come forward. Name and address for the record.
I oppose the budget as currently proposed because it exceeds the revenue neutral rate. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else would like to come forward this evening on the budget hearing? Okay, I see none. I'll close out the public hearing portion of that. And I would entertain a motion this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Ms. Hans.
I move that the council approve a resolution to adopt the 2026 operating budget as proposed.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmoire.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like next item up would be, consider approval request for a change to use, change of use. We've got, we're prepared at the podium. Mayor, council members, give me just a second here to do the set change.
Seeing before you have a request from the Walls or Automotive Group for a change of use to add automotive build sales, as well as a preliminary development plan associated with that request for 7220 West Frontage Road. It's up here on the screen right now. We're all pretty familiar with the site. Internally, staff calls it the Holiday House, and I'll explain that to you here in just a second. But as you can see, the property is outlined in blue up there. It is surrounded on the east side by I-35, on the west side by BNSF Railroad. There are two buildings on there. This proposal, if approved, proposes to tear down the building that's on the front and keep the building in the back half. Removing the building in the front, in the front part, the far to faces I-35, will allow for the construction of approximately about 22,000 square foot new automobile dealership called Genesis. It is the, Genesis is the high-end nameplate for Hyundai Motor Company. So again, a little bit more about the site. To the south is an HVAC, HVAC vendor, as well as a little bit further south, automobile services and repair. To the north is Evelyn Brothers. That's the collision repair facility. A little bit further north of that is a self-storage facility. And then just north of the self-storage facility, that's when you start getting into the number of automobile dealerships that front along Frontage Road there. So again, this is a change in use request. The purpose of the change of use, since it is own planning, the property is own planning and development in general, there is use restrictions in that PUDG district. One of those is no automobile sales. So this is obviously a change of use request to add automobile sales to that district. Again, as a change of use, you review that similar to a zoning, rezoning request. You use the golden factors. Those golden factors are all contained within the staff report for your old review. So a little bit of history about that. Again, as I mentioned earlier, Walls or Automotive out of Minnesota, they have a number of dealerships in Minnesota. In Wichita, they are the property owner and the applicant. They recently purchased the property this year in June. And again, their intent is to build a 22,000 square foot automobile dealership on there. Back in 1993, that's when this property was rezoned and had a development plan approved by the city council that was for that 60,000 square foot building. And at that time, the use of that, that's the, you see the site here, as it currently stands, at that time, the purpose of that building was twofold. One was for national office equipment. It was a business that outfitted offices, and then also for retail business called Holiday House that sold seasonal goods and services like that. So hence the reason why staff has always called it the Holiday House. Again, up on the screen there, you see the current existing conditions. So to your right is I-35. To the east, to your left on the screen there is the BNSF Railroad. The front building here is the 60,000 square foot building that was constructed back in 1993. That's the building that will be demolished. On the backside was a building that was approved for construction back in 2016. It's about 14,000 square foot building. That building will remain, the current tenant ProSource, which is a flooring, flooring company, will remain in place as well. A couple other things to notice on existing condition additions. There are two access points off of East Frontage Road, excuse me, West Frontage Road located here and here. The proposed preliminary development plan would not change those access points. Also like to point out that the applicant provided a traffic analysis or traffic memo with this report. Essentially, that memo stated that with the reduction in square footage that will come about of this redevelopment, also be a corresponding reduction in the amount of traffic. Therefore, no, there's no need for any type of traffic improvements or road improvements to the site. Other important, important part about this while we're here is currently the site has an onsite detention pond that is located right here. The applicant did also submit a memo in regards to stormwater analysis. The memo said there's going to be about a 2% decrease in the amount of impervious surface. So there's going to be more green space onsite. Memo also stated that that detention pond can handle the off, the site's stormwater runoff. Also important, as we have been doing on a number of redevelopment projects, this is best management practices or BMPs. That's the improvement to the quality of stormwater. That's something else that's been a requirement that's been put in place by the federal government that we are adhering to. Part of that, the applicant has agreed to, and it's one of the conditions of approval, that they will be installing a filter on the stormwater inlet. So this is a proposed redevelopment or proposed site plan. Again, up here towards the top, that will be the new automobile dealership, again, oriented mostly east to west on the north side of the property. South side will be mostly area for parking as well as vehicle storage. And back here, you can see that the ProSource 14,000 square foot building will remain. You can see also that the access points remain, and there also will be, maintain good access to the building in back. Here is the landscape plan. I think this is a really good demonstration of what the property's going to look like. There's going to be about 40% of green space on the site. It doesn't show up here because of the table here, but the site does extend on further to the south. So about 40% of the site will be green space, interior green space, so we have about 19% of it. The landscaping they show along, particularly along the east side, is very similar and typical to what we've seen with our other car dealerships that are along Frontage Road. And the site will also provide the required amount of street trees. And then finally, doing a run, a walkabout the exterior elevations. Again, the very top elevation there, that is the back elevation. That's the elevation that'll face to the west, towards the train tracks in the other building. As you can see, the primary building materials of this will be tilt-up concrete, as well as EPHIS, and a large amount of window glazing. The corporate colors for Genesis are gray and black. So as you go down a little bit further, next line down, this is the building facades that faces to the south. Again, you can see extensive amount of glazing that will be here on the right-hand side. That's where the showroom will be at. And then next one down, that is the facades that faces to the north. So again, extensive amount of glazing on there. And then finally, at the very bottom, that is the view that will be seen from I-35. Again, a large amount of glazing fits right along with the other car dealerships that we have that are further to the north there. So with that, your planning commission had the public hearing on this, and after passing the public hearing, based upon the staff report and all the information they had received, unanimously recommended approval for this. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
Is the building going to be LEED certified? Is there any type of environmental impact factors being taken into consideration for the construction?
I do not know the answer to that. That would be something probably to ask the applicant who is here, and I'd be happy to probably speak to that.
Do you want to address that now, or do you want to wait?
Let's, yeah.
Wait, okay. Any other questions? Mr. Cosmoire?
Yeah, have they already started demolition of this building?
They have not. The building is vacant.
Okay.
They are in the process of working on building, of getting the permits for that. But the building is vacant right now.
Okay, Ms. Chavetta?
The building's being torn down already.
Oh, so, yes, they have got the building permit for it, so they probably have started.
Yeah.
Didn't realize that. Nobody told me we had issued it, so.
Yeah.
All right.
It's starting coming down. It's almost down.
We have lots of demo permits that have been coming and going from our offices, you obviously know.
It's okay. I didn't mean to like over-correct you. I just, it's.
No, I appreciate you letting me know, because I was just by, and obviously I did not know it.
Yeah, it's, it's almost down.
Okay.
That's probably why I didn't notice it. It was almost gone. Here today, gone tomorrow. Give Ms. Caudell.
Is the dealership, is it just selling cars, or is there a service department?
There is a service department. Yes, yes, there is.
Okay. Any other, go ahead, Ms. Leahy.
Any question? You mentioned the, the green space. Is it a net gain or reduction in green space?
It's a net gain in green space of approximately 2%.
Right. Any other questions, Director? Mayor, go ahead, Ms. Hans.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, please, go ahead. I was looking for your hand, but I couldn't see it.
Okay, so you can hear me.
Yes.
So this question is for Brian, but also I, I was hoping to be there in person to actually ask the, the representative. But as Brian knows, in the past, I have called multiple times, asking him questions about our car dealerships on both east and west Frontage Road, who are not using their car carrier plan to drop off and pick up cars. They've been parking on Frontage Road. And it seems like there's nothing that we can do about it. So what I was hoping today is to get a guarantee from the representative that they will use the plan that's established on C2.2, so they can, so they don't block our lanes on Frontage Road and create hazards for our drivers.
So I will say a couple of things about that. First of all, this is Brian, by the way, Councilmember Silvers. First of all, there is a note on the face of plan. There'll be no loading or unloading of vehicles within the right of way. That's a typical note. It's on the face of all the other plans. We do, we work with PD, and we do pursue those when we are able to, and we know about those to the best extent possible. However, as we all know, those trucks show up, they unload, and they're gone. And yeah, it is a very difficult thing to, to chase down. But we do, when we are, see it and do pursue it the best of our ability. So we do have tools in place. Obviously, though, we can't be there 24/7. So I will also let the applicant have a speak. Oh, I was also going to add, as Councilmember Silvers did point out, that they did provide a truck turning plate, template, that is part of your old's package, that demonstrates that trucks can navigate and get on-site and unload vehicles without having to do it in the right of way. So again, I did want to add that as well.
Planning Commission doesn't have any issues with the zero tolerance for air on that turning radius?
I mean, no, they really haven't. They can usually use, if they need to, they'll have multiple curves in that location.
Go ahead, Ms. Hans.
So as I understand it, this dealership is moving from Oakmont Park into Merriam?
I believe so, but I'd let the applicant address that.
Okay, and I'm, so I'm just curious if it's an expansion. I'm assuming that's why they're moving is for bigger and better?
Yeah, I am familiar with their site on MedCaf, and this site is definitely way bigger.
I would agree with that.
But I will let them talk to, and speak to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Dyer at this time? And who would be coming forward, Director Dyer, for our applicants?
I believe the applicant's architect, Scott Sloggy, is here. But if you would give me just a second to get his information up here, I'd appreciate it, sir. He does have, there we go. So yes, the applicant is here and present, and I believe they would like to speak to you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Slog, would you like to come forward, sir? Give your name and, and business address for the record, if you would, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, my name is Scott Sloggy. Sloggy Architects. We're located 4600 Madison, Suite 350 in Kansas City, Missouri. I have the good fortune of sharing with you our vision for this facility, and I will also try to attempt to answer all the questions that you asked of me. Mr. Dyer did a commendable job to give you a quick overview of what we're doing here. I thought I would show you the colorized version, as well as some 3D images that'll help to bring the building to life.
Arrow, 3D, right here.
Oh, right here. Great. Thank you. Again, as you had mentioned, the site plan, we are accommodating the existing buildings behind it, which is ProSource. So one thing we had to do when Mr. Dyer mentioned the truck template, we have to accommodate truck traffic back there as well. And the truck template we, we created by our civil engineers shows very clearly that the car carrier can navigate through this facility very easily. That was important to both us and the city to make sure that would occur. These elevations, again, are starting to show colorways that are reminiscent of their branding and trade dress. And you'll be able to see those better in the 3D images I'm about to share with you. Within this facility, I think there was a question asked about service. So we have to meet the branding requirements of Genesis for this facility. It's the first of its kind here in Kansas City. And as a result, it's going to have to meet all their requirements, as well as the city requirements in its manifest. One thing that's important to note is that we've also added a photo bay, which is a 360 photo bay for them to photograph their vehicles, as well as a car wash. Those are in addition to what they would normally have for their facility. One thing we also worked with you very carefully upon was the location and the height of your monument sign. I can't exactly remember exactly when we first looked at this. Mr. Dyer, it's probably 15 years ago, almost, in which we first did the Toyota. We had the good fortune to do the Toyota dealership. And so that monument sign was established with a sea level that had to be used for all other monument signs along that corridor, including this one. There's a question asked by the planning commission about its height. Its actual height for this tower, if you will, is less than the Toyota, Toyota sign because of the sea level height. And you'll see it here, shown in the upper left-hand corners image. I just want to make sure that you, you had a note of that. And again, the, the trade, the branding and trade dress will be utilized on that sign. There'll be an LED light. It'll be, you know, very subtle, very, I think, elegant in its approach. It will not have a lot of bright lighting to, inside of its housing. Here you go. Here's an image looking directly to the south and west. So the aforementioned ProSource building is behind. It's shown as a white box. And as Mr. Dyer mentioned, there's a lot of glass inside the showroom. In fact, one thing that Genesis wanted us to do is to wrap the glass all the way around the building as a clear story. So even though we're not necessarily pursuing a LEED certification, this harvests so much natural light inside the building that reduces our need for lighting within, for most of the building's daily use. Again, here is showing the, the two elements on the north side. You're looking to the southeast, where we have the photo bay and the service ride-up. Here's a view looking to the northeast. Again, the showroom on the right, and the clear story glass that wraps all the way around the showroom and into the administrative offices. And a view looking to the south, I'm sorry, to the northwest. Again, the ProSource building, the background, kind of gives you reference. And the use of landscaping, in fact, we've asked for KDOT to allow for us to have landscaping along the front, front of our building that's within their right of way. Of course, with the advent of any kind of expansion, we'd have to relocate the landscaping, but they allowed us to have more landscaping than we would have actually on our, our site. And here's how much light is looking into that space. So at night, it's going to glow very, very nicely. And the use of landscaping and convenient parking for customers makes this thing a very, a very inviting building. very inviting building. We're also providing a lot of zero clearance entry for ADA compliance and for ease of customers that come into the facility. I guess I had mentioned, there's that clear-story glass that wraps around the building that allows a lot of natural light to make its way deep into the facility. And here's a view from I-35. So it should be, I think, a very attractive building in how it's perceived as folks drive northbound and southbound I-35. And that concludes my presentation. I'm trying to think if there's ever a question you need to answer. Oh, a demo. So we do have the demo permits, but we're working on the interior first to make sure that what we can salvage and can be recycled, we do that first. And then, once that's been completed, we will start to go to the exterior demolition to complete that work. The timing, we hope, depending on how we get our permitting in place, would be to open this thing late summer of next year, of '26. So it should happen pretty quickly. It takes about an eight-month period to build this facility. And I will entertain any questions you may have.
Ms. Yodrich, go ahead.
I had the previous question about LEED certification for the building or other environmental impact factors.
We are not looking at that right now. But one thing you should note is that, as architects, we find that there's a social responsibility for us to look at all aspects of the design and construction for these facilities. And as a result, we found in our industry that many folks have taken proper steps to make sure they're using recycled content, they're using good methodology in how they construct buildings, reduce waste. This building's no different. So even though we're not seeking LEED certification, I think a lot of that stuff is already baked into the cake.
Any questions? Mr. Slog, go ahead, Ms. Hands.
And then, just to revisit my question about the size of the facility and perhaps the number of people employed, how that's changing?
It's 21,500 square feet. And as I think was suggested, it's being relocated from a very small facility. It's at 77th and Metcalf. Used to be the former Mazda dealership back in the day. You guys recall that? And that's probably 5,000 square feet. And they've done such a great job in selling cars, but they don't have a way to properly service these vehicles. So they're excited to get this facility open. In fact, they're building enough, we think, enough service cars here to be able to stay here for a long period of time and service their customers into the future. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
I was hoping you'd tell me that there were going to be a lot more jobs.
I don't know exactly what the number of jobs might be, and I'm sure we can get that answer to you at a later date. We find that the service technicians alone, if there's 16 service base, you've got 16 technicians during the day, and probably a couple who are substitutes or part-time service techs. And then, inside the showroom, I suspect there's probably 15 to 20 employees there, but that's just a rough estimate.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Slog? Go ahead, Ms. Lai.
I have two questions. Once you mentioned the social responsibility as an architect, I'm just curious what steps you are taking to go above and beyond the code minimum for either energy code or building code, life safety, accessibility?
Well, I'm a LEED certified architect, first off, so it's important for me to use good practice standards for buildings, as well as having social responsibility. We find that these buildings are always a challenge to make it important to our customers to understand the value of sustainability for these buildings. And you can define sustainability however you'd like. It comes in many different forms. That includes being a good steward in how we construct it. The operational aspects of it, so that you're using materials that will be sustainable and not have to be replaced over time. That the operations are essentially sipping energy and not gulping it. And so we make sure that with all aspects of the design, architecture, structural, mechanical, electrical plumbing, are all really pursuing excellence in providing those materials, finishes, and operations.
Do you know how much it exceeds the code minimum for energy usage?
I don't know right offhand, but I do know that these facilities use a lot of energy. So we find that the dealers have understood that, especially if they're going to operate these for a long period of time, that it's in their best interest to reduce their energy costs as well.
All right. I don't feel like I got an answer to my question, but that does lead me into my second question. You talk about hardy materials that are sustainable and have long use life. You mentioned ethos is a primary material. Ethos is a notoriously cheap version of stucco, and I was just curious if that is part of Genesis' brand standards?
It's not really ethos. This is either a tilt-up or pre-cast panel system. So you actually cast the concrete and tilt it into place. It has a finish that may be reminiscent of ethos, but it's not ethos.
Maybe Brian may have said ethos as a finished material.
Well, it has that appearance. And maybe it's classified by the city as being ethos, but it's truly a concrete panel that has a sandwich of insulation inside of it to give us the proper R-value for the building to perform.
Okay, I'm familiar with sandwich panels, so if it's not ethos, then my question has moved.
Any other questions for Mr. Slog? Okay. I see no questions. Thank you, sir, for answering our questions. Okay, well, at this point, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Hands?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council concur with recommendation of the planning commission and approve with conditions. A request for a change in use to add automobile sales and service to an existing PUDG and associated preliminary development plan located at 7720 West Frontage Road.
Okay, we have a motion. Go ahead, here a second. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Cottle.
Aye.
Councilmember Lai.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Real quick, before I vote, I want to remind everybody that we lost a local business for this new business to come in. Really important local business to a lot of people in the Croatian community specifically. And we're adding another car dealership and giving them an incentive of IRBs.
We haven't done that yet.
Okay. Well, I just want to remind everybody that. So with that, aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cosmier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, next item up is going to be consider approval resolution. Looks like Mr. Engel's coming to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Next item on your agenda is related to your last item, as to consider approval of resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds to provide sales tax exemption on construction materials for a commercial facility located at 7220 Frontage Road. The city is in receipt of a application requesting industrial revenue bonds from Walzer Automotive, who, as you've just discussed, will be bringing in a new Genesis automobile dealership. They are requesting sales tax exemption on the cost for constructing, equipping, and furnishing that new dealership. Again, as a reminder of IRBs, IRBs are effectively a discount on sales tax. Effectively waives, it's about a nine, well, if it was bought in Merriam, it'd be a 9.475% discount on the cost of construction, because that is the value of the sales tax. Pursuant to the bond documents, the way that an IRB would work is that the dealership would be leased to the city through a base lease. Then the city would lease it back to the dealer. And the rents and the bond payments would mirror one another. So the rents that we would charge would be the debt service on the industrial revenue bonds that will get them the sales tax exemption. The city has, well, we are effectively issuing the industrial revenue bonds. The city has no obligation to pay those bonds. It's actually spelled out in state statute. This process is really just how the state has determined is the best way to award a sales tax exemption. Per city policy, the company has to pay all the origination administrative fees on the issuance of those bonds. And we did put together in your packet just a ballpark of what potentially the value of it would be, based on the application. The construction cost would be $10 million. If we assume $10 million is the construction cost, the discount would be 9.475%, which would be the sales tax exemption. The majority of that comes from the state. The state is 6.5% of your 9.475. So approximately $650,000 would be a discount provided by the state. Johnson County, other piece of the sales tax is 1.475, so approximately $147,000 of value would be derived from there. And then the city is 1.5%. If all of these materials were to have been sourced in Merriam, the discount that the city would be providing through that sales tax exemption would be about $150,000. Again, this is optimistically that $10 million is the right number, and that all of these things would have been sourced in Missouri, in Kansas. The motivation for IRBs from the state is really, especially when you are located close to state lines, you want to incentivize dealerships or developments to source their materials in Kansas. So that is why the state has been willing to forego their large chunk of sales tax that goes at the point of sale. We have a resolution. This is the first step in the process, should the council want to provide those IRBs. We would come back at the end of construction, and we would ask the council to consider an ordinance, which we will do, actually, our next item here for another development. Jacob Lowry is our bond counsel with Kutec Rock. He developed, he put together this resolution of intent, and will be answering any of your industrial revenue questions. We also have, as you've seen, reps for Walzer Automotive here, who would be happy to answer any questions you have about their particular need for this incentive. I'm happy to answer any questions you have before turning it over to anyone else.
Any questions for Mr. Engel this time? No questions for Mr. Engel? Oh, wait, Ms. Shaveta, did you have a question?
I have questions for the applicant.
Oh, the applicant, okay, all right. Nothing for Mr. Engel? Okay, I guess, which applicant's going to be represented this evening? Mr. Wasner?
I believe Mr.
Mr. Heaven.
There we go.
Okay. Please come forward, sir, if you provide your name and your business address for the record.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Pete Heaven. My address is 6201 College Boulevard in Overland Park. And I represent the applicant, Walzer Automotive Group. I stand for any questions you might have.
We have any questions for Mr. Heaven? Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Shaveta.
As I stated, I have some questions. So no one from the applicant is actually here, because they're out of state, correct?
No, Don Schilling, an officer of the company is here.
Okay.
Would you like to talk to him?
I'm just curious, you know, we, coming to Merriam, we love to have our new developments really invest in our community, and so I want to make sure that they are willing to make an investment in our community through our school district, through our foundation in the Merriam, you know, just different ways of being involved at the chamber, all of the things that we ask of all of our applicants for things like this.
Want to come up? And just so you know, Walzer has 26 locations in Minnesota and Kansas, and I'm sure they're deeply involved in all the cities they have dealerships in.
Name and your business address, sir?
Don Schilling, 4401 American Boulevard West in Bloomington, Minnesota. The Walzer Foundation is very ingrained in the local communities in which we serve. 5% of our pre-tax dollars goes right back to the community through our foundation.
In all of your locations, or like your home state, or is that?
Whatever the location serves. So our Kansas City operations support Kansas City local community things, and then this Merriam would sponsor, Merriam would benefit from the 5% here. Minnesota keeps their stuff in Minnesota.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Lai.
Actually, this ties to, actually, probably a question I should have asked Chris Engel when he was up there. We don't, we tie our investments in local events to TIF funding packages, not IRB packages, correct? About sponsoring events and communities under grants?
We build civic obligations into any of our redevelopment agreements that we have, yes.
But not IRBs.
If we were to have a formal agreement, we could absolutely build civic obligation, or we could just hold them accountable for the statement just made. Either or.
I guess my question for you, though, is this IRB, what does this sales tax incentive do for you that you wouldn't do without it?
Well, it's, I mean, it's an incentive. I can't tell you we would not build without it. I don't think, I think that'd be disingenuous, but it's a savings that will be passed along in the future with our customers, consumers. That's about a 10% discount, yes.
Any other questions, Mr. Heaven or Mr. Schilling?
Mayor, I would like to add a couple of things.
Sure.
Since we're talking about economics, our projected sales are going to be about $40 million a year. So sales tax paid to Merriam will be in the neighborhood of $900,000 per year. Based on the other car dealerships nearby, we will be paying an additional $180,000 in real estate taxes than you're receiving now. And we'll have 24 full-time employees, because I know that question came up.
Okay, are you done, Mr. Heaven? That's it?
I have a quick piggyback on that. So how many people are employed currently at the dealership?
We have 19 full-time currently.
So you'll add five roundabout. Thank you.
After the first year, we would expect to add at least another 19 or 20, so.
Great.
All full-time, all full-pay, full benefits.
Great, thank you.
Good place to work.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Yodrich. For them. Please don't leave it. It looks like we've got one more question.
One more question.
Yeah, I'm a little curious about the Walzer Foundation. So what exactly does your foundation support? And where do you put that investment? And I know in local communities, but what specifically? Because that can mean a lot of things.
It is. Traditionally, the money goes towards education. Underserved children, single-parent families, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Any other questions before I release these two gentlemen? I think we're good. Thank you, sir. Okay, well, I would.
I've got some questions. I've got some questions for the bond counsel, actually.
Okay. Questions for the bond counsel? There you go. Name and business address for the record, sir?
Jacob Lowry. I am at 2405 Graham Boulevard, Suite 600, Kansas City.
All right, so I get sort of the big picture, the point of the IRBs, to provide the sales tax relief. But like, we don't necessarily give the general contractor a card that says, hey, don't charge them sales tax, right?
It's a exemption certificate that then they can take to.
Okay, so they don't go to Home Depot and buy a bunch of two-by-fours and then get, and then file their receipts and get reimbursed later?
Right, it's handled with the taxing.
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
What's that?
No, that actually cut out like three.
Okay, great.
So perfect. No, right.
Good to hear.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, we're good. All right, thank you, Mr. Lowry.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward.
Genesis Luxury Auto Sales will be displacing a unique local Merriam business, one of a kind, Strawberry Hill, Povetitia. This will further erode the diversity in Merriam's tax base and businesses and erase some of what makes Merriam unique and great. I do hope that all businesses prosper, including Genesis. And I approve the resoning request, but losing Strawberry Hill is not something to reward by giving $1.8 million to the rich. We've just heard they will build either way. So we won't lose them by denying the IRB, and we'll help set a precedent of not handing out money so much. Bob, please don't do it.
Okay. All right.
Don't let him do that.
I know, I don't want him to do that. I would entertain a motion at this point.
Because various numbers have been pushed around, can I be absolutely sure about what this number is supposed to be?
Which number?
The resolution of intent for the issuance of taxable IRBs and the amount not to exceed The resolution of intent for the issuance of taxable IRBs in the amount not to exceed
That is the.
$619,000?
That is the amount of the IRBs that at the conclusion of the construction, we would come back and issue.
Okay.
It's a, it's a do, it's a not to exceed number.
I understand. You, I didn't hear you mention it, but then you mentioned a lot of other numbers, so verify.
But we think the estimate to build the building is 10 million?
Well, they included the cost of the acquisition in that $18 million, so they would finance the cost of acquisition also.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the, the sales tax portion of, portion of that is only roughly $10 million.
And so in the, in the uses that was included in your package, you've got land, so $18.6 million, you've got land is 8.6, construction cost 8.5, machinery equipments 1.5. So the sales tax would be in the numbers that I just, again, estimated, use 10 million bucks.
Any other questions, Ms. Cosma?
So, sorry, so then that's the total value of the property and at most the sales tax dollars?
We need the bond counsel.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and we can look at that, Chris, we may need to refine that before we actually issue the bonds to make sure we're capturing the right construction costs. But yeah, they can only take sales tax exemption on expenditures they actually make, and then they have to prove up those expenditures by providing those records to the trustee.
And, and the max sales tax expenditures is the 9.5% of $18 million?
It's more, it's more of a function of what did you spend on construction?
Okay.
That's what, then you take that percentage from.
But we're not assuming that the sales tax would be the $18 million?
No.
Right, okay, that's the total.
That's the total.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, and are we ready?
We need to know who's brave enough to read the motion.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion. Would you like to have a motion?
I'll do it.
Ms. Chaveta?
I'll do it.
Go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution of intent to issue federally taxable private activity revenue bonds or industrial revenue bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $18,619,000.
I have a motion, do I have a second, Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Yeah, we have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich. Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
So I don't think it sounds like this is entirely necessary for the project, given that demolition's already been almost completed, so I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes six, one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like the next item, and that was for the intent of a resolution, so we're, Mr. Engel, please come forward.
I'm back. So what we just did was, city council approved a resolution of intent, which is the first step in the IRB process. What this item is, is actually an ordinance to approve the issuance of bonds for the Merriam Grand Station. So this would be the last step of a similar process. In August of 2022, city council approved a resolution of intent, similar to the item we just approved, a previous item, to issue taxable industrial revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $93 million for the residential component of Merriam Grand Station. The point of issuing those bonds would also be to, for the developer to receive a sales tax exemption on the cost of their construction materials, but also in addition to receive a 10-year property tax abatement, except for that we have negotiated a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, which I will cover here in a second. That agreement, that resolution, which was number 926, that was approved in August, almost three years ago to the day, was with Merriam Grand Station LLC. Since then, Merriam Grand Station LLC has been assigned to Merriam Grand Lofts LLC, same folks, same characters, just a different LLC. Again, provide property tax abatement and sales tax on construction. Again, the way that our IRBs work, there will be a base lease, the residential component will be base leased to the city, we will turn around and through a lease, lease it back to MG, MGS Lofts. The rent payments on that lease will be the value of the debt service over the course of the 10 years to get them the abatement and the sales tax exemption. The IRBs are paid solely from lease payments, and the city, again, is not obliged to pay any of that debt service that they have. This is just the mechanism in which these things all flow through. As I mentioned, with this particular item, because of the property tax abatement, to mitigate some of the negative impact abating taxes would have on our taxing entity partners, meaning the school districts and the county, the library, so on, community college, we have entered into a pilot agreement. Pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes, so while we are abating their property taxes, they are going to pay annually, just like, they will receive a property tax bill effectively, and they will pay a base amount of $24,741 a year. That will flow to all of the taxing entities as if it were a property tax. Major difference between property tax and a pilot is that property taxes are ad valorem, they're based on the value of the property, that you follow the math all the way through the mill. This is just a set agreed upon amount. This amount was the 94, 1994 base level for those properties. That is the property tax that was being produced at those because they were over in the TIF over there. So in order to keep everyone whole at the rate where they were, that was negotiated. So you will see also in your packet is that pilot agreement in addition to all of the bond, bond paperwork. All of those were developed by Jacob Lowry, bond counsel with Kutech Rock. He will be able to answer any questions, I can't, and we do, I think we have Scott. Scott, we have some reps from Drake, Merriam Grand Station Lofts, over in the crowd, if you have any questions for them specifically. What approval of this, should the council approve it tonight, will effectively start is that the abatement can start on 1/1 of 26, and that's when the pilot payments would also start. So it starts the clock. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Mr. Engel on this topic? Go ahead, Ms. Hands.
In reviewing the documents, the payments are actually made to the county and the county then distributes it to the taxing entities.
For the pilot payments, yes. Yep, it functions exactly like a property tax payment.
Just like property tax.
Yep, except for instead of it being based on this formula, it's based on some other factor.
Okay.
Which, which the factor here is the 94 base level.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Engel? I see no questions. Well, I would entertain a motion for that. Go ahead, Ms. Hands.
First, we need to waive the customary first reading.
Yes, yes, that'd be correct.
So I move that the council waive the customary first reading of an ordinance issuing industrial revenue bonds from Merriam Grand Station Apartments Project.
Okay, we have a motion, Ms. Chaveta?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so we've waived the first reading, so I would entertain a motion, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance issuing industrial revenue bonds from the Merriam Grand Station Apartments Project and authorizing the signing of the bond documents.
Do we have a motion, do I have a second? Ms. Hands.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Seven, zero.
Oh, is it, Mr.?
Seven, zero.
Seven, zero, okay. Yes, oh, aye, what?
Did you vote no?
No, I voted.
Councilmember Silvers.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that the mayor voted, so ignore my.
No, I wasn't voting, I'm sorry. Mr. Silvers, you voted how?
Seven, zero, it should be seven, zero, yes.
Seven, zero, yes.
I can't count tonight, it's fine. There's two empty seats.
We're all good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, motion passed. Next item up is to approve an ordinance amending the municipal code, is going to handle that this evening.
I will take care of this.
Okay, clerk, please go ahead.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. We are here once again tonight talking about our public records. So back at our last meeting on August 11th, staff presented some proposed code changes and fee schedules to better reflect our practices and provide clear, concise expectations for public records and to help staff manage the number of record requests that come in. And for you tonight, we have incorporated all those changes into ordinance form, and it is ready to go, with the exception, we do have two changes that we need to make to the proposed ordinance. After we posted the packet, the city attorney noticed some language in the ordinance that needed to be changed. So on the dais, I have provided you with a redlined copy of that, and it is on pages four and five of the ordinance, which highlights the change. So the section 2-1562, which is procedures regarding copies of public records, states that written requests shall be made on the form provided by the record custodian and presented to the record custodian. This same language also appears in section 2-1572 in regard to the procedure for inspection of records. This particular sentence, both of them conflicts with the state statute 42-220B, which prohibits us from using a specific form. Now, this was not language that we were proposing, this was actually language that had been in the code since 1994. So this is just another one of those instances when it's good every once in a while to take a look at the code to see, you know, how things have changed, what needs to be updated to ensure that, you know, they align with state statute as well as our operational procedures. Additionally, we would ask to go ahead and approve the fee schedule that we discussed last time. These are related to the changes to the code as well as related to recent changes to state statute as far as charging fees for records. And we are requesting council waive the first reading. The state statute changes obviously went into effect July 1st, and so we would like to get it all updated to mirror the state statute. And I have, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Ms. Pennick this time? Okay, I see no questions, okay. Yeah, I see that, okay. Please go forward, sir, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, mayor, Mr. Council, or council. The proposed ordinance makes it harder and more costly for residents to keep informed of the inner workings of their own city. You have spoken, clapped before, Bob, about how transparent that we are, and it's all alive. You pass this ordinance tonight, making it harder for my neighbors and I to access open records that were originally created using our own tax money to start with. Thank you, please don't pass this.
Okay, anyone else have any comments out there? I see none, okay. Well, in light of that, then I would entertain a motion at this point, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council waive the customary first reading of an ordinance amending chapter two, article five of the Merriam Code of Ordinances.
Do we have a motion, do I have a second? Ms. Hands.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, that was waiving, so I would entertain a motion, Ms. Hands.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance amending chapter two, article five of the Merriam Code of Ordinances and the associated changes to the 2025 fee schedule.
Do we have a motion, do I have a second? Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like the next item would be staff items, so we have Director Dyer coming to the podium for a community development update.
Evening, again, mayor, council members. Council had asked me to give you all an update on 7-Eleven at Antioch. Just let you know that property is owned by corporate 7-Eleven. We have been working with them and our code enforcement has reached out with them and met with the maintenance folks and have identified the issues that need to be addressed and cause any kind of code violations. They have gone out and they have ceded, they have cleaned the place up quite a bit. So we are in contact with them, working with them, make sure they stay within compliance on codes. They have not indicated us or by any kind of applications what they plan to do with the property. So be happy to answer any questions about that before I move on.
Any questions? No, we're about that one yet, okay. Other questions about 7-Eleven? Our Director Dyer, I think, move on.
So a little bit of update on grants, the property tax rebate that you all have, well, the applications that timeline will end on Friday, so we will be shutting that down. It's been very successful, we've had a number of applications and been able to disperse and rebate a number of folks, their city's portion of their property tax. That's been a highly successful program, again, probably the one that we get the most positive feedbacks, people are just overjoyed when council is able to help them out with that. Also, in regards to grants, we have just completed the five driveways, we have a driveway grant program for this year, so that has been completed. As I mentioned earlier, we have lots of permits coming out of, out of community development, and one of them that we just released, issued last week, right at the end of the week, was the shell, building shell permit for Trader Joe's, so that has been issued. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, go ahead, Mr. Leahy.
I had a question on the grants. I was told recently that we extended the tree grant to include backyard trees. Is that true or no?
Yes.
Was that in the E. Merriam? How did we, how are we telling residents about that? Because I may have skimmed.
It was in the E. Merriam.
It was in E. Merriam.
I don't, no, that's fine. Community board doesn't do that one, that's why I'm a little bit like a deer in the headlights up here.
You're good, thank you. We got the.
I got the answer, so we're all good.
Good, 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 good. Any other questions?
Any other questions, Director Dyer? All right, guess I don't see any. Thank you, sir. All right, well, let's see, next item up, I guess, is July financial update. I'd like Director Borth coming to the podium.
Yes, good evening again. So our financial position remains.
Turn on the microphone.
Thank you. Try that again. Good evening again. So our financial position remains strong through July with our expenditures being well-managed halfway through the year, and our revenues are still trending above projections, which is amazing. And as far as the question from last time about transient guest tax, Karen Crane over tourism and economic development and I have started our deep dive, so I hope to have some sort of an assessment or an evaluation for you in the next month or two, just depending on how long that takes.
Just, may I?
Yes.
Just to clarify then, so what was in the, in the action form? It's not that it's below, that it's trending below, it's, we don't even know what the answer is, right?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
It's timing, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Question from Director Borth? Okay.
Thank you.
I see none, thank you. Okay, uh, the informational items, we had the draft minutes of the PC, the planning commission, and then public art committee minutes, is, if I have any questions for any of the directors concerning those topics in our packets?
Uh, Mr.?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr..
Um, I've got a comment, I guess, about the planning commission minutes, and I'm just really glad to see at the very end, um, that they're still keeping an eye on the possibility, um, and trying to push an elevated pedestrian crossing across Johnny Mission Parkway between Merriam Grand Station and Grand Station Market, um, and I'm excited to see that reference that it might get looked at in the CIP discussion, so.
I was actually asked that question today.
Great.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Okay. Okay, I see no questions then, I, I don't think we have an executive session this evening, sir, or anything from staff?
Uh, just one update, uh, idea that we are likely going to, um, put a little thought to and roll out is down at the marble shop that the city acquired for, uh, potential creek use on Merriam Drive, we have quite a bit of excess marble, we have called every marble company in town, no one wants any of it, and we are having some requests from residents that would like some of it, so we are, uh, we're gonna put our heads together, but I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna move some of it out front and maybe do like a Saturday morning, if you can haul it, you can have it, but we can't get anyone that wants it. The, um, wrecking crew is, would be happy if we hauled as, as much of it off as we could, because it'll be a little bit of a pain for them, I mean, some of the larger stuff, they'll try to salvage, but just between carrying that stuff and people have wholesale deals, we've learned more about the marble market than we ever thought there was to know, um, but no one wants it, and we feel like it's the, if the residents can haul it, they can have it. So I don't know, we're gonna probably push that out in social media, we'll just probably do like a Saturday morning from eight to noon, we'll just have an employee down there or two employees down there that, just to basically make sure it's safe, but it basically you haul it, you can have it type of situation if you're a resident. We're still putting some details on it, I just wanted to roll that out to council, let you know that's something that we're thinking about, uh, just so we can make it available to the residents.
Have, have you thought about, uh, the possibility of opening it up to the businesses that are located in Merriam as well, or?
We called the marble businesses, we've called the stone businesses.
I mean, just any business.
Well, I mean, yeah, anybody Merriam related, I think we would, would be fine, yeah, we don't think we would have any issue. Our only issue is gonna be that you have to be able to haul it, we're not gonna load it for you, we're not gonna put our, our folks in harm's way, so what we're probably